Welcome back to the March 9, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calveras County Board of Supervisors. We will be continuing closed session at the end of the day and report out will be at the beginning of the next meeting.
We can't see people.
They're not able to see you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Kalina. Please stand for the Fledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start out with staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Any staff announcements?
Supervisor Stoker, this is Chef DiBasilio.
Hello, Mr. DiBasilio.
Hi, good morning to you. I just wanted to give the board a quick update on our jail regarding the emergency that we brought to you folks at the last board meeting. We actually had some good luck. We were able to get our computer system working, which saved us a handful of dollars. So, things are, we're still progressing with it. There are still more things, obviously, that need to be done, but I just want to let you know that we did get our computer system back up and running, and it didn't cost as near what we thought it was going to cost. So, that was all I had. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff DiBasilio. Any further staff comment?
Yes, I have one. This is Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Good morning, Chair Stoker and respective board members. Our Animal Services Department and Focus are happy to announce and share our free rabies and microchip clinics to be held here at the government center on the following dates on all Saturdays, April 3, May 1, June 5, October 2, December 4. And a separate September 4 clinic will be held at the Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp. The fire will be distributed to the community as the date approaches. Want to send a huge thank you to Patrick Martin with Buildings and Grounds and his crew for helping us facilitate the use of their building. A very gracious thank you to our partners at Focus and the veterinarians that donate their time to bring these wonderful events to our community and our fur babies. Focus collaborates, supports, and provides our Animal Services Department and our shelter with so many services and programs, including free rabies and microchipping clinics, medical supplies, adoption support, spay and neuter programs, direct shelter transfers, shelter enhancements, and community education. And they also provide pictures of our animals for our fires and the media. Focus recently reached out to corundin beds for our dogs and cats at the animal shelter. The corundin beds are hypoallergenic, able to tolerate multiple cleanings, and especially chew proof. Due to Focus and their patrons that support them, the shelter will be receiving one play tower, four cat beds, and 10 dog beds. At this time, I would like to individually thank our Focus board members, including Debbie Beaufort, Christine Elbering, Michelle Cody, Carol Cook, Karen Day Arigala, Diane Finnegan, Melissa Hamley, Sherry Logan, Victoria Martinez, and last but not least, Darcy Zimmerman. Thank you again, Focus. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Any further staff announcements?
This is Kathy Kalina. Sorry, go ahead.
Kathy, sorry.
So, the camera, I'm just saying the camera's focusing at the wall, so we can't see any members of the board.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Public Health Update. Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sam Leach, I'm your interim Health and Human Services Director. Thanks, as always, for allowing me to be in this interim role and for allowing me to present today. Let's get into the data and then discuss how we, in public health and the county, continue to take a balanced approach to move incrementally forward in our fight against COVID-19. As of today, since the start of COVID, we have completed 23,946 tests. We have had 1,933 positive tests. We have 40 active cases, 1,844 recovered. We have one current hospitalization. We have had 49 fatalities to date. We have administered a total of 12,655 vaccine doses to Calveras residents. That's up from about 9,200, I believe, when I presented the last time to the public. Vaccine doses delivered to public health last week, we received 2,670. We also received, I believe it was about 3,700 the week before that. So, the last two weeks have been very good as we've been catching up on the backfill of what were two very slim weeks the weeks before that. If you remember, we only received 100 one week and zero the week before that. So, the larger allocations the past few weeks seem to have been the other shipments catching up to us, and we're happy to receive those and now be really moving forward with a lot of vaccination efforts. The current tier is being vaccinated. We're now basically calling for everybody in Phase 1A and Phase 1B. So, we opened up to Food and Agriculture Group. They are now allowed to register, and I will cover that in a little more detail later in my talking points. Okay, so, as of this moment, we are still technically in the purple tier, which is the most restrictive tier. But according to the state data, it does look like we should be getting out and moving into the red tier. So, that is not an official announcement as of yet. We have to wait for the state to make that announcement, but the data does show that we are eligible to move into the red tier. So, that's exciting news. As soon as the state makes it official, which is supposed to be around noon today, we will work on also getting a press release out and getting that out onto social media. So, the red tier, as you know, will allow our businesses to start to open up. I would advise people, because I can't get onto every nuance of what that means, to go to the Blueprint for a Safer Economy webpage for the state, and you'll be able to look at the differences between the tiers. We will not, so, they will announce it later today, and then we are effectively out tomorrow morning. So, that means that March 10, tomorrow, is our first day in the red tier, assuming no surprises between now and noon when the state makes the announcement. Test positivity rate and new cases per 100,000 will continue to be critical moving forward. Those are the two data measures that the state uses to determine what tier we're in. You know, I'm super excited that we're going to be moving forward. You know, we've been, we definitely don't want to move backwards, right? And we've just spent, you know, the better part of three-plus months being incredibly restricted, and we've seen a very difficult surge that, you know, surge sounds like a pretty hard word to me when we're talking about, you know, 49 fatalities and lots of other people who have struggled with COVID. And I just want to make sure that I present a little bit more of a concerned tone as good news comes and we start to talk about things that we've been waiting for and, you know, schools opening and a move towards more youth sports and other things that I'll cover today, that I want to make sure that we do that with the reminder that a lot of people have suffered and a lot of people continue to suffer from COVID. And so, you know, we need to not be too celebratory in our incremental approach to move forward. You know, one of my favorite mantras is that direction is more important than speed. And, you know, frankly, there's been a lot of criticism, and I'll accept that criticism as far as the quickness with which we've been able to move forward. But we've been heading in the right direction now for several months. We're well over 12,000 vaccine doses administered. We're moving out of the purple tier. Businesses are going to be able to start moving forward. Restaurants will be able to open with limited capacity. I believe it's 25% for now, but it's a start. Schools are continuing to work on opening up and making sure that our kids can attend in-person class. A lot of good things are happening. It just isn't quite happening fast enough to meet a lot of our pent-up demands. And so, I'll ask the community to continue to be patient and continue to view this as a balanced and incremental journey. You know, we're getting there. We're over the hump, in my opinion, from my perspective, we're over the hump, but there is a lot of work to do. Absolutely a lot of work to do. So, another disclaimer is just please, you know, I implore you, don't get too complacent. Encourage yourselves and the people you know to continue to wear masks, to maintain social distance, six feet of distance, avoid large gatherings, and wash your hands. And the other thing is, please, even though you see the, you know, the prevalence of this in our community lessening, which is a great thing, one thing that will really help us moving forward is that you please stay home if you're sick and isolate if you're sick. If you have any symptoms, you know, the last thing we need right now is to move backwards because we start to have small outbreaks because people start to think that this is over. You know, we haven't quite reached that point with the vaccines yet. The vaccines are helping. As you see, the numbers are coming down steadily and incrementally. Really happy about all of this. I wish I could express a little more joy. I just, I want us to be cautious. I think it's really, the important thing for us to do is to look at this balanced approach and say, hey, if I'm feeling symptoms whatsoever, I'm going to stay home. I don't want to be part of why we have an outbreak and then isolate. Okay, things you can do around testing. Today, we have testing at Ironstone from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And you'll notice that the testing hours have been reduced slightly. We've had less demand for testing, but we are continuing to make that available on Tuesdays. The hours are just now, they're 10 to 6 at Ironstone. This Friday, we have testing at Calveras Consolidated Fire. That's the Jenny Lind Fire Station from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Once again, that's Jenny Lind Fire Station from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. this Friday, March 12. So, that's where you can get your COVID testing. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we still have the site up in Sonora for the OptumServe site. Okay, moving to vaccines. We ran our first clinic at our new Frog Town site last Thursday, March 4. The Frog Town site worked very, very well. We did this with smaller numbers because we wanted to test the new facility, but for the Calveras residents, I would assume that almost everybody knows where Frog Town is, has been to Frog Town, Fairgrounds at some point. You understand that it's a large parking lot. We've got an exhibit hall that we can work out of. There are a lot of advantages to us being out at Frog Town because frankly, you know, the small travel clinics that we've done a couple of in West Point and Copper, and again, still trying to set up something in Valley Springs at some point, we like doing the travel clinics. The reality of the travel clinics is we have to set up and tear down. We're normally working with much smaller facilities than what we have at the Fairgrounds. And what that means is, you know, we tend to do small outreach at those travel clinics of, you know, we've done as few as 50 in a day at those travel clinics. And on a good day, we might stretch it to 100 vaccine doses at one of those travel clinics. Compare that to Frog Town, where this Thursday, we're targeting to do 600 doses, and, you know, that's on our second run. So, you know, it's a big difference, and really, we've moved it to a point, as you heard with the vaccine allocations, where we're getting a lot of allocation now. And assuming that trend continues, which it sounds like it will, you know, we need to keep putting doses into arms. So, the Frog Town site is working out very well. We have another clinic running today for second doses out there that's not open, but we have this Thursday, a clinic open at the Frog Town site. Again, we have opened up to Food and Ag. So, that's a big change, right? Okay, sorry, a lot of stuff to cover today. So, last week, so, with regard to opening up to Food and Ag, there's something I want to say, which is, last week, we reached what we would call a saturation point with regard to the 65 and over population. And what I mean by that is we started to see the demand for registration come way, way down. And that was at last Thursday's clinic, as well as what we've heard from our partners at Mark Twain. Frankly, the 65 and over group has been working at this since, I think, the middle of January. I can't remember the exact date, and they've had opportunities now to find places to get vaccinated. So, if you're 65 and over and you're still looking for a place to get vaccinated, remember, you're still eligible, so you can sign up for our Frog Town clinics. But we needed to also expand to the Food and Ag group, and basically, we're open to Phase 1A and Phase 1B. So, if you're part of one of those groups and you've been thinking you want to get your vaccine, but maybe didn't want to fight through the rush, it's a good time to go sign up in the MyTurn website, which is the next point that I'll get into here. All registrations for county clinics from this Thursday on will be done through MyTurn. So, you know, the MyTurn website, we put out a press release yesterday. It's on our website. You can Google MyTurn California and find your way to it, put your information in, get set up, and be ready to get a notification when it is your turn to register. That is also where we set up our Frog Town clinic. So, that's what you'll be looking for in there when you go to sign up for a clinic is the Frog Town clinic there in Angels Camp. So, important note here, I want to make sure I don't miss this. If you live and work outside of Calveras County, as of right now, we're going to cancel you. So, people are already trying to register from out of county who don't live or work here, and they're seeing that we're open on the state website, and they're trying to squeeze in here. And unfortunately, there's not a mechanism in the MyTurn site for us to exclude them from registering, but we will call them and cancel their appointments, and we're already actively doing that. So, the more that message can spread around, these are for Calveras residents. Our vaccine allocation that we receive, you know, if you work here, great. If you live here, great. Sign up in MyTurn, keep an eye on that Frog Town clinic. We will try to, as much as time and manpower allows, do some other smaller clinics in the outlying areas, but Frog Town is where we're going to be putting a lot of doses into arms. Okay, next thing, a note on schools. We will continue to coordinate with our partners at CCOE to make sure that we can continue to safely transition the schools in their efforts to have, you know, kids have safe in-person learning. We also want that to include some sports that can be done safely. We'll do everything we can to support the schools there. I did talk to our superintendent of CCOE, Scott Manick, earlier this morning, and we will have ongoing discussions later. I know that he is super excited about us hopefully moving into the red tier, and that really triggered some changes surrounding what schools can do and what youth sports can do. It doesn't mean that everything opens all the way up. It's incredibly complex. The state, as usual, has given us very complicated guidelines that we have to work through to make sure that we're in compliance and don't do anything that would jeopardize the safety of our residents or vaccine allocations and funding issues that we have when we have to frankly play by the state's rules. So, that may not be everything that the community wants to hear, but I do think that as we incrementally move forward, things will start to open up a little bit, and just be patient with us. We still have to play by the rules as much as we can. You know, we want the kids in person. We want the kids to be able to play sports. We want the kids to be able to do the other extracurricular activities. You know, the reality is, we still have to make sure that everybody's safe and that we don't take things so far that we end up having outbreaks that compromise the progress we've already made. You know, one week of a large spike in cases, and we're right back in the purple tier for several weeks. So, I'd implore you guys to take this seriously. Continue, please, if you're healthy, go get tested. You know, continue to keep our test positivity rate down. Do the other things that we've continued to ask you to do. Avoid the gatherings. If you're sick, stay home. The things we need to do to keep the case numbers from spiking again. And at the meantime, you know, our part, we're going to continue to push that message. We're also going to continue to put doses into arms because frankly, the vaccines, you know, we're seeing the turn in part because we're getting a lot of doses into arms and so are other jurisdictions, but I'm really proud of Colleen Rodriguez, our Deputy Public Health Director, and her team for just how long they've been in this fight to see them now transition to set up these large clinics at Frog Town, where I got to be there last Thursday, and I got to see a lot of our aged population as they were coming in, finally get vaccine doses, and having worked at clinic, I got to see the look on their faces as they're leaving and just how much gratitude there was and just how thankful some of these folks were. And I couldn't help but think of how scared they've been for so long and just how many of us have been impacted by this thing. So, really proud of the public health team and the efforts that they've put in and will continue to put in because these guys, they don't get to rest. Yeah, still a lot of work to move forward. So, I realize I've been talking for a really long time. It's been two weeks since I gave an update, and two weeks is a really long time in this fight. So, that's what I have for you today. I would like to turn it over to our partner Doug Archer before taking questions. Doug, you on the line? Did I put you to sleep? You ready to roll?
I'm awake, Sam. Thanks. I don't have too much else to offer, other than what Sam already mentioned. As he said, we have one hospitalization right now, and they're actually fairly stable. They're in our general med surg floor, not ICU, so that's a good sign. We, at Mark Twain, we launched our online scheduling last week. Actually, it was the Friday before that, and that's gone really well. I think it's a little easier scheduling for patients, but we're running into the same issue that Sam had mentioned, where I think we've kind of saturated that 65 and up category. We had one day, I believe it was Thursday, where we had 300 first doses that we could give, and we were only able to schedule, I think, 140 or 150 people. So, we're still working through the list, but the list is, you know, again, they have a lot of other opportunities to get vaccine, which is great. So, you know, the goal is just to get vaccinated. We don't really mind where you get it. If I did my math correctly, I think to date, we've given, through the Mark Twain clinics, around 6,500 doses, and our team's up at the Arnold Clinic today doing second dose rounds. So, the only other comment I have is, you know, and it sounds like a broken record, but I think it's important for everybody to know, kind of the benefit we have here in Calveras County with the strong partnership between our public health team and our hospital. So, with the changes that have happened with vaccine distribution, allocations, all of those things, Dignity Health is no longer receiving vaccine allocation. We're getting very, very limited amounts just to support our inpatients to the tune of like, you know, 10 doses a week. So, if, from my point of view, if it wasn't for our partnership with public health, we would not be able to get vaccine. So, I just appreciate the partnership we have and the, you know, the ability to get supply vaccinations from the county health team, and I just, I hope our county residents understand how really fortunate we are to have that relationship and have two large entities working together trying to get Calveras vaccinated and open up again. So, that's all I have unless there's any questions.
I appreciate you giving that update. Doug, I appreciate you taking the time to be here again and what amazing partners you guys have been, you know, since the beginning of this fight and continue to be within, you know, whatever rules and adjustments that Blue Shield and the state give to us. Because frankly, you know, we would have loved to see you guys just keep continuing on the way we were going. Obviously, the state has put up some roadblocks for us, but you guys just continue to do everything that you can do within those, you know, those parameters, and so, just really thankful to have your guys' support in any way that you can continue to help us move forward. In a lot of those lines, I just, I have to say this, there's one thing that I completely whiffed on, and as I was thinking about what Mark Twain has done for us, I also just want to say thank you to so many people who volunteered to help us with the vaccine clinics. Just being at Frog Town last Thursday and this Thursday, you can see, you know, there's volunteers, the sheriff's volunteer network is always fantastic. There's CERT from the state teams. There's, OES is out there helping us with traffic and the flow of that stuff. You know, there's been probably more people, the vaccinators frankly, you know, from our state volunteer network that we get, people drawing and just, even the folks who aren't volunteers, just let me tell you, these guys are putting in countless hours, especially the, you know, maybe I'm a little biased, but the managers at public health, I just want to say publicly that I see how many hours these guys are working, and, you know, it's not overtime for those guys. They're doing it because they believe in this fight and they want to put in everything. So, if I've appeared defensive of them at times, understand that it's, you know, I've got to live with these guys go through just for a short period of time, and I just have nothing but admiration for what they're doing. So, there you go. All right, with that, I'll shut up. I know we've been talking a long time, and members of the board, what questions can we answer for you?
Thank you, Mr. Leach, and please don't ever shut up. We appreciate, we appreciate all the good work you're doing. Any board member questions at this time? Mr. Guaramendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Sam. I want to start off by thanking you and Mr. Munoz for answering my financial questions I brought forward two weeks ago. It was a very thorough report, and I appreciate it. So, thank you. I don't have to ask about that one again. You know, you mentioned, let's not be too celebratory, but I think that you guys really should celebrate a little bit. We finally, I'm sorry, Sam.
Mr. Guaramendi, I'm sorry, there is a, is it just me? There's a lot of static, and I can barely make out any of what you're saying. I apologize. I'm having the same.
I am, too.
Can we get a mic check for Supervisor Guaramendi, please? I want to make sure I hear the questions, and sorry for petting you off.
It's all right. Test 1, 2, 3. You want to try a different mic? Is that still staticky?
It is a little bit, yeah. It is.
How's my mic?
It's really loud.
Oh, I'm, my face is right in it, so that, thank you, Ms. Kalina. Mr. Leach, can you hear me clearly?
I can hear you clearly, yes. Sorry, Supervisor Guaramendi.
Mr. Guaramendi, could you maybe share microphones with Ms. Callaway? Let's see if that works any better.
Thank you. Maybe my questions I can take up another time.
Is that better?
But I just wanted to, can you hear me better? No.
All right, Mr. Guaramendi. My apologies, Mr. Leach, we're going to have to work on that throughout the bit. What were your questions, Jack? Do you want me to add?
It's all right. I could ask them offline. It's okay. I just think that they're doing a- I just think that they're doing a great job.
Sam, this is Supervisor Toffanelli. Can you hear me?
Sure. Mike?
I'm trying to get in Supervisor's up there.
Can you hear me? Sam?
Yeah, there is a lot of static coming through though. I apologize. I promise I'm not actually trying to duck your questions. There really is static coming through. I'm not sure, maybe we could take a quick break to resolve them?
I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Leach. We're gonna take a 10-minute break to try and resolve a technical issue and then we'll be back shortly.
Thank you.
My step's not that important.
And we are resumed.
All right. We're gonna give this another try. Mr. Leach, are you still online?
Yes, Chair Stoppa, and I'm all out of excuses for not answering your questions for it. So let's hear them.
All right. We're gonna continue. Mr. Toffanelli, did you have any questions?
No.
Ms. Callaway?
Go ahead, Gary.
Gary has no questions.
Mr. Leach, I heard what Mr. Archer said about dignity, no longer receiving an allocation and the issues with Blue Shield and the state and the roadblocks, but is Mark Twain going to be allowed to use My Turn and helping others in the county as we move forward? I guess I'm asking, is there a road to continuing this partnership since the county and Mark Twain both want to continue down this path? Thank you.
There is, there is a road and I'm not sure, I should probably defer to Doug to answer from his perspective on that. Doug, are you still online?
Yeah, yeah, so we are, we're actually in the midst of signing up for My Turn this week. I don't know when we'll go live, but we are signing up so that we can provide vaccine through, you know, supply from the county, but we'll be able to provide vaccines through that supply using My Turn. Shouldn't, I don't see any really issues to continuing the partnership and being kind of a subcontractor in a way to the county.
So do I understand you and Mr. Leach to say that your allocation will come from public health versus through dignity?
Yeah, I think that's a fair way to state it, yeah.
Yeah, and from our perspective too, it does look that way. You know, we're a small public health team, so we're happy to have the help and the additional option, additional location, additional manpower. So we'll continue to work together. Frankly, Mark Twain, you know, they still have a lot of second dose stuff to do and other things that they're working on. So I don't want to mislead anybody and say they're, you know, doing nothing right now. They've just been a little more limited because of the way the state tracks the allocations and the data and the kind of bureaucracy that they've put in place with the third-party administrator. So we'll work through those things. You know, Doug and his team at Mark Twain have, you know, pledged to be in this for the long haul and we don't doubt it. It's just kind of a, you know, they were doing a lot while we were trying to do as much as we could and right now it's kind of swinging back the other way where we're stepping up and putting as many doses into arms as we can. We're prepared for this. We will be doing this mostly out at Frogtown when it comes to the numbers and Mark Twain will continue to do what they can. In the meantime, while we work through this stuff and while they're getting onboarded hopefully with My Turn, and then we will share allocations with them moving forward and continue to work as a team, you know, and sometimes they get to carry the ball and sometimes we get to carry the ball, but we're moving forward as a team and as a community and, you know, even the folks that we're maybe not working directly with, the pharmacies and medical providers that are also, you know, giving doses, it's doses into arms. So we're all in this together and happy to see those efforts and happy to work together as much as we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Any further questions, Ms. Vondorff? No? Okay. I've got a couple of small things. With the transition of our, to My Turn at this time, you know, with our current list, I would hope that we have a smooth transition so that no one's left off the rear end that has already put in, that hasn't necessarily put into My Turn. How's that proceeding, Mr. Leach?
Well, to give you, to give you some perspective, you know, it's really hard. When I talked earlier, Chair Stoppa, about hitting a saturation point with the 65-plus, last week's Frogtown clinic, we set up to get significantly more slots than what we actually ended up getting. And we saw the same thing from Mark Twain. So we believe that the folks who've been eligible and waiting have been circled back to. Now, there are other groups that, you know, even going back to 1A and emergency response and, you know, some medical providers that we continue to circle back to to make sure that they're eligible, that they know they're eligible, doing as much outreach as we, you know, possibly can or know to do as we continue to receive clarity about which specific groups fit into tiers. So we continue to double back to those and, no, I don't think people are getting left behind. I think stories of people getting left behind will probably continue to linger from, you know, January and, you know, into the mid to late February frankly, where, you know, there was a lot of fear and panic of people really fighting to get to the front of the line once they felt like they were eligible. And, you know, that was the nature of the phase that we were in. And when I say phase, I mean our phase of getting through this, this fight to get everybody vaccinated, right? And so now, just my narrative on this, I feel like we're kind of entering a new phase where the allocation is really ramping up and because of that, the state in coordination with us is really kind of broadening out the criteria of who's eligible to get it. So whereas we were really fighting hard to be incredibly strict on the criteria until we had clarification that someone was eligible back in January into, well into February, now we will continue to operate within the confines of what the state says we can do, but I'm just saying that that is really opening up. I mean, especially with the Food NAG group, you look at who qualifies inside of Food NAG and it's a pretty broad range of folks that work there, especially here in Calaveras County where it's a, they're big contributors to our economy and we want to get those people vaccinated and we're happy that that's opened up to them now. And I think we'll move through them fairly quickly and then get to where we start to see us move down in age. So, you know, moving forward, by the end of March, hopefully we're gonna see where people, you know, under 65, but, you know, certain criteria there, probably the 50 to 65, or sorry, 50 and up category, you know, we'll start to see them become eligible. And then we'll work our way down from there over the coming months and by early summer, I'm feeling pretty good. So, long-winded answer, but hopefully that covered you. I don't think we're leaving people behind. If they are, go get signed up in My Turn and get registered for one of our clinics. Right now, as far as I know, we still have registration slots open for Thursday. There are still pharmacies all over that are taking appointments. I know that Mark Twain is still looking at doing first dose appointments with the 65 and over. So, members of the public, you guys have options and I'm sorry if sometimes it's confusing. We want to get you vaccinated.
Excellent answer, Mr. Leach. I appreciate that. Moving on to, with the state potentially finalizing us moving into the red tier, hopefully within the next few days, this provides a more clear path, although strict the path is how the state has put forward their guidelines for further opening of schools, you know, potentially sports being able to be played, you know, but I just want to clarify a couple things. These are guidelines that are set before us by the state and they're very strict on how they would like them done. You mentioned earlier that you talked to the Calaveras County Office of Education, Scott Manick, and, you know, continually with correspondence, I have children in school, you know, I talk to many parents that have children in school and, you know, a lot of the correspondence sent out to parents in the community says, "In coordination with Calaveras County Public Health." With that, your main objective is to relay what those state guidelines are. These aren't guidelines that are necessarily put forward by the county. They are put forward by the state. And also that, for more clarity, the state is the one that provides funds through the Calaveras County Office of Education to each and every school. So at that point, the county does not have control over that also. But, you know, we're letting, with our correspondence, with CCOE and the other school districts, your job is to let them know as clearly as possible this day what the state guidelines are and how to best be able to maneuver through those. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty correct. I appreciate you saying all of that. You know, we have a role in making sure that the kids and frankly their family members are safe. And so the state entrusts us to do that with the guidelines that frankly come down from CDC and ultimately interpreted by CDPH, California Public Health, and then, you know, pass through to us. So our role is really a partnership with CCOE. What's really frustrating and confusing, I think, for a lot of the parents is when you see one school return to pretty much full-blown in-person learning and then other schools not be so aggressive in their return, or maybe they're still doing hybrid classes. And some of that frankly is about the workspaces, the classroom spaces that are available. You know, frankly, you know, you can't go out and build new classrooms in a month, right? So these are existing school structures that we have to work with and it's things like making sure desks are six feet apart. And that's just one very easy example we can put out there. So, you know, whereas one school may have more capacity to be able to do that because of the way the school is designed, other schools may not be so fortunate, especially when they're impacted. We see this a lot in inner-city urban schools where frankly they're very limited in their ability to implement the CDPH guidelines within the current architectural structures of the schools that they have. And so it's really frustrating to, you know, play the middleman for that because we want our schools open, you know, we want kids to be able to learn, we want them to have their extracurricular activities. You know, this topic, I, you know, I've said it publicly, I personally have a graduate from last year and I know what it was like when we shut down last March and, you know, to see the kid, you know, lose the opportunity to perform at her final theater performance and, you know, graduation. And now we're seeing that for this class of 21. You know, I feel for those kids. I know a lot of those kids. I'd love nothing more than to just, you know, open the floodgates. The reality is COVID is still in our neighborhood and we have a responsibility in our community to do this safely and incrementally with a balanced approach. And we're trying to do that. So that's part of why I started the day with a little bit more of a measured and, you know, concerned tone. Hey, we're moving forward. We are working past this, but we know it won't happen at the speed that people want it to. We know that our parents will hear that we moved into the red tier and then they'll want everything to be back to normal. And that's just not where we are. We're a step ahead of where we have been the past few months and we'll take another step forward and we'll keep doing that together. But we need to keep the vaccination process going. We need to take care of each other. We need to make sure that we're, you know, I can't say it enough, but stay home if you're sick, wear your mask, all the things that we've been encouraging. So hopefully that helps. Yes, we will continue work with CCOE. I plan to discuss it again this afternoon. Our team continues to work with their team. I know that Scott Manick is committed to providing the testing support that's required to get the sports that are allowed and not all of them are, but, you know, the state's working on continuing to improve guidance when it comes to outdoor recreation to try to open things up a little bit more. Indoor is still probably a ways off frankly, but there are things that are opening up and they're trying to work with us as much as possible. We're trying to work with the schools. But you're correct, Chair Stoppa, we are not necessarily the bad guys. We're kind of the messenger in a lot of ways. There are times when we have to, you know, say something if we feel that the situation isn't safe. Colleen, did I cover that enough for your taste? Is there anything you'd like to add to that? Colleen Rodriguez is the Deputy Director of Public Health and I want to give her an opportunity to chime in here if she wants.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I think that an important thing for the community to know and also for supervisors to know is that we meet with CCOE on a weekly, if not more often, basis. We have a school liaison who meets with those folks and kind of walks through all of the guidance that's coming out because it is constantly changing. And so, you know, it is a partnership. It is truly a partnership between CCOE and public health. We bring different things to the table, but both of our goals are the same, which is to ensure that kids are safe and healthy and able to do whatever the state says that we're allowed to do. So that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach and Ms. Rodriguez. I appreciate the information. If there's no further questions by the board, I will open this for public comment.
Yes, we have Terry McBride.
Ms. McBride.
Terry, can you hear us?
Okay, I just got the unmute button. So this is Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator of New Calif- Okay, so there's another button I had to push. I'm sorry. Terry McBride, California State Committee Chair and Senator of New California State for Calaveras County. Last Monday, I had the honor of sitting on a citizens committee hearing, listening to our neighbors in other counties, speaking about the effect that these radical, victorial, unconstitutional lockdowns has had on them. We were hearing from people whose life savings have been completely wiped out so that they could stay afloat. Hearing from actual school officials talking about a marked increase in suicidal thoughts and tendencies amongst the young folk, as well as depression, not to mention adults, and the isolation of senior citizens where public contact is so important. Saying goodbye to their elderly parents by phone, not by their side where they should be. To me, that's elder abuse. When your parent passes, then you should be there for them. And then where are the board of supervisors? Are you folks reaching out to your local people and asking them the exact same questions we were, offering them an attempt, an opportunity to speak up about what this has done to them? I want to read to you the order of the day of our last few weeks grievance. "New Sin's Enabling Act on the heels of Biden's Reichstag fire creates temporary and extraordinary powers," and my timer didn't go off, so I don't know where I'm at on time. "Considering the succession of events that transformed Germany from a constitutional former government into its totalitarian dictatorship in rapid succession, in February 27th, 1932, the German Capitol building, called the Reichstag, was breached and burned down. The political party blamed for the breach was opposing the Nazi Party. The Nazis accused the opposing party, the KPD, of starting an insurrection. The Chancellor Adolf Hitler convinced President Paul Wall Hindenburg to suspend freedom of speech, press, and association, lest they didn't have to wear masks. Joseph Goebbels, with full support of the Nazi big media and big tech, created propaganda suggested the nation was in a state of emergency hysteria. Created, allowed Hitler to vilify his political opponents and unite smaller parties and factions, his political enemies, getting a two-thirds vote, passing Enabling Act, basically an emergency act that gave him full and absolute power." Does this progression of events sound familiar? I don't have time to read them all, but if you read them, it's gonna raise the hair in the back of your neck. It does to New Californians who are not complying with it. What Hitler did was known as the Legal Revolution because he did everything under the color of law and by then supplement- of law and by then supplementing representative, supplanting representative government with Nazi bureaucracies. Gavin Newsom informs historian that apparently has a lot in common with the plagiarist Shanghai Joe Biden, who also appears to have plagiarized the entire administration's first act of office, directly after Hitler's tried and proven power.
Ms. McBride.
I'm up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
I've got to say something. Terry, as somebody who's had family die in the concentration camps, I do not appreciate your referring to this country as Hitler and Nazism. If you could find something else, I'd greatly appreciate it. This is Marita.
Any further public comment?
No other public comments at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. If there's nothing else by the board or public health, we'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements. County Council proclamation recognizing Peter Moore's seven years of service as Calaveras County Planning Director. And with that, I do want to say thank you, Mr. Leach and Mr. Archer for your presentation and Ms. Rodriguez for your input.
Thank you for having us.
I said Ms. Rodriguez. Colleen Rodriguez. All right. And so today, we're going to read the proclamation together. Is Mr. Peter Moore here?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Good to see you, Mr. Moore from Mauer. So we all have it here if we want to begin with number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Peter, I think we're all happy to read this proclamation. So instead of one person reading it, we distribute it to all five of us. So we're going to read it down. I'll read the first whereas and then District Two on through as we go on. And again, congratulations. Seven years. I only wish it would have been eight and it would have been an even year that you leave on, but, you know, you're leaving on seven. So whereas, Mr. Mauer received degrees in geography, geography, in rural and regional planning from Cal State Chico in 1982.
Whereas, from 1986 to 2013, Mr. Mauer rose through the ranks from associate planner to senior planner to principal planner to deputy director, developing a statewide reputation among his peers for outstanding work in his field. And?
Since March 3, 2014, to the great fortune of Calaveras, Mr. Mauer has served as the county's planning director, during which time he bravely led to successful completion the long overdue comprehensive overhaul of the Calaveras County General Plan. And we didn't get sued on it like his former county. And was, among other things, instrumental in modernizing the county's housing policy and in the development and implementation of the county's cannabis program through its many permutations.
In 2020, Mr. Mauer received the California State Association of Counties Circle of Service Award in recognition of his outstanding assistance in development of state housing and news legislation.
Whereas, Mr. Mauer is beloved and revered by his staff, the public, and his colleagues for his unfailing, warm, upbeat, collaborative approach to decision-making in the planning and land use sphere, and may add, his wordsmithing.
And whereas, Mr. Mauer plans to begin his retirement by enjoying more time hiking and biking in his beloved outdoors, by further developing his considerable skills as a brewmaster and inventor. He makes a mean sour. I don't know, I haven't tasted your mean sour. So Peter, before you leave, can you bring some in?
I can do that.
And by traveling the world with his wife Susan.
And while many in this county, including this board, have conspired to find a way to prevent Peter from retiring, County Council was unsuccessful in this effort to find ways to legally achieve this goal.
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Supervisors reluctantly adopts a proclamation recognizing the achievements and the career of Planning Director Peter Mauer based on some things that we've made up.
One, the proposed proclamation is consistent with the general plan. Evidence, Goal CP1 of the general plan is for strong communities whose citizens' voices regarding community planning are heard and respected. Planning Director Peter Mauer, through his entire tenure as Calaveras County, has lived and breathed that goal. Mr. Mauer is passionate about what he calls good planning, where the goals of county legislators, developers, and community members can be harmonized in a way that results in a community that looks good, benefits the local economy, and is minimally intrusive on other people and the natural environment. Because of his hard work fostering Goal CP1 of the general plan, a proclamation in his honor is consistent with the general plan.
While Peter's retirement will have a significant and unavoidable effect on the environment within the meaning of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, a proclamation in his honor is not a project under CEQA. Evidence, pursuant to Public Resource Code 21065, a project within the meaning of CEQA is an activity that is, one, a discretionary action by a governmental agency, and, two, either have a direct or reasonable foreseeable indirect impact on the environment. While there is no question that Mr. Mauer's retirement is likely to have a systemic impact on the human and nature environment, while the county scrambles to fill his outside shoes, his retirement is sadly not a discretionary action by a governmental agency. It is an entitlement he has earned. Furthermore, a mere proclamation in honor of Mr. Mauer does not itself have a direct or reasonable foreseeable indirect impact on the environment and is therefore not a project subject to CEQA.
Thank you, Board. I would like to give staff and public the opportunity to make comments. There should be a long line, please. And Board, while others speak, let's have one mic on at the same time just to mitigate some of the feedback throughout the process, please.
So if any of our panelists would like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Peter, I didn't prepare anything for you, but we started on the same day, went to orientation together, and somehow you're beating me out the door, and I'm incredibly jealous. I still think it's unfair, but you have earned it and just been just completely classy and gracious and one of the better people that I've met frankly in my professional life. So happy for you and wish you the best in the next opportunities.
Thank you, Sam.
Hey, Peter, this is Rick. And I just want to say, since I've been the sheriff, we've worked quite a bit with the marijuana stuff, and as the proclamation said, you've done a fantastic job there. I really enjoyed working with you. And I, like Sam, am upset that you're beating me out the door, but enjoy your time and make the best of it. And it was, again, great working with you. Thank you for your, all your help, very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Peter, I just have to echo what Sam and Rick have said. It's been such a pleasure working with you, and you seem sometimes like the only person on campus here who everybody likes and no one has anything bad to say about. And I think that really speaks to what a great person and colleague you are. So I hope you enjoy your retirement and you'll stick around and maybe participate in different ways in the future.
Peter, this is Doug Oliver talking. Hey, I've only been here about a year and a half, but I can say that your input and your good counsel has been incredibly helpful for me to not only fit in here but chart a very positive course for my department. So thank you very much for your good counsel, and Godspeed to you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm trying really hard not to cry because I'm a crier. And I just want you to know, Peter, it's been great working with you. You have always been open and answered my questions and helped our community and our businesses and economic development and community development. And I know you're a humble man, so I know all this acclamation or acclaim and notoriety is not your comfort zone, but I just want you to know you mean a lot to me, and thank you for working for Calaveras County and staying in Calaveras County.
Thanks, Kathy.
Peter, I wasn't going to embarrass you any further. I know that I created some embarrassment with some of working with your staff on drafting the proclamation, but I just want to say in all seriousness, it's been nothing but a pleasure, mostly a pleasure, working with you. At times, during certain weeks, I know we argued like an old married couple who referred to each other as our work spouses, for better or for worse. This being said, I really, I really and truly appreciate the effort, the knowledge, and your respect for legal issues that you brought to our working relationship. I feel like you're a tremendous asset to the county, and I'm very, very nervous about whether or not your replacement will come with that same knowledge and respect. Anyway, thank you very much. You've very much earned your retirement. I look forward to not bickering with you and simply enjoying your sours.
Is that all, Ms. Simpson, for the moment?
Yes, that is all for the moment.
I, Peter, Mr. Mauer, you know, as a person, I consistently try to elevate the person I am. I often, you know, set goals high, you know. Sometimes we shoot for the stars and hope to land on the moon, or, you know, one opportunity or another, you know, in growing ourselves is, you know, I would hope to elevate myself to the person that you've become and be able to do the things you do. And I don't know if I would potentially ever hit the stars like you have, but maybe I can get halfway there to the moon.
Thank you, man.
Peter, this is Lisa. And I just want to thank you. You know, I was only here a short time, so I'm considered kind of the newbie. But, you know, from day one, you kind of took me under your wing and you kind of guided me a little bit on our land use and our CEQA and everything else. That's all planning. All Peter Planning is, that's going to be our new name for you. I also enjoyed the sours that you shared with me. Gary, maybe I can give one to you? Anyhow, so I just want to tell you that, you know, we are going to miss you in our land use committee meetings, and you will truly be missed, not only professionally but also personally. So good luck to you, happy trails. And I don't know if everybody knows this, but Peter is almost done, I believe, Peter, with climbing the last mountain in California. Can you share a little bit about that? I think that's really cool.
Well, I just want to thank everyone, you know, Julie especially, for writing a very clever resolution. Thank you very much. My staff, the best staff in the world. I've been very blessed with, you know, great planners to work for me. All of the other department heads and their staffs, from the sheriff's office to public works, to the building department, to environmental management, has really been a great team. But most I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to work for the county. It's really been a pleasure, interesting challenge. Never really thought I'd be in this position, but the opportunity arose and I decided to go for it, and it's really been, you know, a pinnacle of my professional career. And it's been a pleasure working for this community. You know, I sort of saved in the resolution, there were, you know, three things that you look for in a community, what's referred to as the triple bottom line, the economic health of the community, environmental health, as well as the social health. And I hope that I have, you know, striven to attain that for Calaveras County and for its individual communities within the county itself. So thank you, Board, for giving me the opportunity. Thank you to everyone for the accolades. A little embarrassing. Yes, I've been trying to climb the highest peak in every county in California. I've got a few to go, so once my knees recovered from surgery last week, I'll start climbing again this summer. So thank you, everyone.
Oh, if we don't make a motion, and if it dies for lack of emotion, does he have to stay?
You know, the same thing crosses my mind. This is a proclamation recognizing Mr. Mauer.
Well, if we don't recognize him, then he doesn't have, he can't leave.
I think if we don't recognize him, he may want to leave even more.
Well, and he also married a local woman, so, you know, he's double-dipping all the way around.
I will entertain a motion from a board member hesitantly.
I will very hesitantly make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffinelli. All of those hesitantly willing to recognize Peter Moore's service to Calaveras County?
Vote no.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
I didn't think so. Five oh. Thank you, Mr. Moore. You know, we read the entire proclamation. This is a little bit out of our normal structure, but, you know, I'll be therefore resolved that the Board of Supervisors adopt a proclamation recognizing the achievements and career of Planning Director Peter Mauer based on the following findings. And I won't repeat those findings, sir. Thank you very much. I hope one day soon, we can still get together with you as a board and get a picture with you in our entirety, because definitely something we want to have a point where we can put on the wall in here with our other art, you know, and everything else. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Mauer?
You're welcome, and thank you, everyone.
Ms. Simpson, we will be moving on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not complete during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Yes, we have Terry McBride.
Ms. McBride.
Good morning, Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator for New California.
Passes on a five oh vote of the board. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Administrative Office, authorize the board chair to sign the response to the four-year 2019-2020 grand jury report regarding the assessor's office. With that, any comments by the board? I'll give the opportunity for administration to bring up anything prior to that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Krista Von Lauder from the county administrative office. What you have before you is the draft responses from the board to the 2019-2020 grand jury report regarding the assessor's office. And with that, I will, I would like to be able to answer any questions the board may have.
Ms. Callaway?
Ms. Von Lauder, did the assessor have any comments on this before it was put on the agenda?
I did not receive any comments from the assessor on this item.
Thank you.
Any further questions by board members? Any public comment? We'll give it time for the delay.
There is no public comment at this time.
With that, if there's no further comments or questions by the board, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Boulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five oh vote of the board. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Administrative Office, authorize the board chair to sign the response to the four-year 2019-2020 grand jury report regarding the assessor's office. And with that, I will, I would like to be able to answer any questions the board may have. Ms. Callaway?
Ms. Von Lauder, did the assessor have any comments on this before it was put on the agenda?
I did not receive any comments from the assessor on this item.
Thank you.
Any further questions by board members? Any public comment? We'll give it time for the delay.
Anything? There is no public comment at this time.
With that, if there's no further comments or questions by the board, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Boulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five oh vote of the board. Regular agenda item number 17, planning. Conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning on APNs 042-009-040 and 042-009-041 from C2 to R2. Authorize publication of brief description and map of reclassified property. Mr. Mauer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to turn this over to Scott Spear, the project planner, on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Spear?
All right, thanks, everybody. Just making sure you can all hear me good. I'm going to share my screen here.
We can hear you fine and I'll let you know when it pops up from our end.
It says I'm disabled from sharing my screen. Okay.
We'll try to remedy that for you as soon as possible.
Okay. Oh, here it goes.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. And we see it.
Okay. Oh, I'm at the end. Let me start over. All right. This is planning project 2020-072, which is a zoning amendment for John Paul Allen. The unaddressed parcels in question are located across from 247 Market Street in San Andreas, as can be seen here on the map. And here is an aerial view of the parcels in question. The proposed project is a zoning amendment to amend the zoning on two parcels that total 0.33 acres. The parcels are currently zoned C2, which is general commercial. The property owner is requesting for the parcels to be rezoned to R2 to construct two duplexes, one on each parcel. Here's the general plan map of the area. The general plan land use designation for the subject parcels is community center along with most of the other parcels along the highway corridor in San Andreas. The community center designation, as described in the general plan, identifies a mix of residential and commercial uses intended to serve the residents of and visitors to the community and the surrounding area. Further states that residential uses typically include live-work units, second-floor residential, single, and multifamily units. The requested R2 zoning is compatible with the general plan as the compatible zones are listed, as you can see on the screen, many residential zones, including R1, R2, R3, commercial zones, C1, C2, CP, the business park zone of M4, recreation, and public service. The proposed zone change is compatible with the goals and policies in the general plan. Policy LU 1.3 states that the county wants to encourage development of infill parcels and redevelopment of underused properties. Approving this zone change would facilitate the development of these currently undeveloped parcels. Policy LU 4.4 encourages clustering of residential development where appropriate based on availability of infrastructure and community character. The residential development of the subject parcels is within an area with existing infrastructure, including water, sewer, power, and roads, and is adjacent to developed residential parcels. The proposed zoning will also promote the development of affordable market rate housing, contributing to the county's ability to meet its regional housing needs allocation target and furthering the goals of the housing element. As for zoning, here's a map of zoning in the area. As stated previously, the parcels are currently zoned general commercial. The proposed zoning is to family residential. The current C2 zone is a commercial zone, obviously, and the proposed zoning is R2. This commercial zone that it's in is stated to provide lands for intensive and general commercial use. County code enumerates over 130 permitted by right primary uses in the C2 zone for multiple types of commercial activities such as retail, service businesses, public assembly, processing, and many others. The proposed change to R2, this zone provides, is intended to provide for two primary types of land use. First is the conventional duplex. Second is a single-family attached housing such as condominiums, planning developments, or townhomes where each unit is individually owned. County code lists nine permitted by right primary uses for the R2 zone, all which are associated directly with residential development. The proposed duplexes are a primary permitted by right use in the R2 zone. The current zoning in the surrounding area is mostly residential. The subject parcels abut a commercial C2 on three sides and single-family residential to the south across Market Street. However, the current land uses in the area, these commercial parcels on two sides are actually developed with single-family residences. Oh, this is going all over the place. As can be seen here in this map, I actually mapped out the actual use rather than the zoning so you can better illustrate this. To the south are duplexes and to the north and east are single-family homes. The commercial property to the west is a bed and breakfast inn. According to, let's see here, oh, here we are. So county code requires two onsite parking spaces per dwelling unit in the R2 zone. And the proposed project does include one, two garage for each dwelling unit meeting these parking requirements. The recorded map establishing the subject parcels has created a no-access strip along Market Street and a single driveway is developed to serve both lots. This driveway currently exists and will be improved with the development of the parcels. According to some residents in the area, there are some concerns over street parking. The duplexes to the south are underparked and they don't have enough room for the required onsite parking and as a result, some parking is spilled out onto the street. This insufficient parking has caused spillover to sometimes block driveways to other properties. I have some pictures showing this parking area here. This area of Market Street is a little bit wider than the adjacent areas and as a result, attracts on-street parking as well. This curb here, as you can see, this is the frontage for the parcels in question. Now, here is where if you park too close, you block access to the bed and breakfast inn's driveway. However, this section is, the curb is painted red, so if you do park here, not only are blocking a driveway, you're also in a no-parking area. So either way, it is not allowed. Here are the driveways to the duplexes across the street. The duplex units share driveways and as a result, there is not enough room to park two vehicles per dwelling unit off-street and contributed to the parking issues in this area. There's an aerial showing that same thing. There's three driveways with four units, just not enough room for onsite parking for these duplexes. And it is staff's determination that with the proposed duplexes on the currently vacant lots, with those meeting the required parking standards of code, that will not exacerbate the current parking issues of this section of Market Street. Here's a view of the currently developed driveway. I covered in leaves because, you know, winter time. Moving on to the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the SEPA guidelines. This section exempts the construction of single-family residences and accessory dwellings, duplexes, and residential accessory structures. The R2 zone is much more restrictive than the current C2 zoning of the subject parcel and the permitted by right uses only allow for the construction of single-family dwellings, duplexes, and other structures associated with residential use. Construction of structures not mentioned in 15303 are not permitted in the R2 zone without additional entitlements and an additional SEQA review. This project was heard before the Planning Commission at the January 28 meeting. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. And to conclude my presentation, this project, it's a zoning amendment to rezon two adjacent parcels from C2 to R2. This change in zoning has been found to be consistent with the general plan and with the zoning code. It is found to be compatible with the surrounding area and exempt from SEQA and has received unanimously recommendation from Planning Commission. For these reasons, staff recommends that the board, to find this project exempt from SEQA, adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning on the subject parcels from C2 to R2 and to authorize a publication of a description and map of the reclassified property.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Is Mr. Allen available for any possible questions from the board if so, and then any input that you would like to give?
It does not appear as though he is on.
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to give Mr. Toffenelli opportunity as this is in his district and for any questions to the planning department.
No, I don't. I went over this completely. I did not, I'm going to say I did not receive any public comments on this project at all regarding parking or anything else. It is commercial property, the way it is zoned now, so if commercial industry went in there of any type, it seems to me to be more of a parking problem developing that than it would be for residential in there. So I think it's a good fit. I haven't heard anything from the Robin's Nest or any of the adjoining...
This insufficient parking has caused spill-over to sometimes block driveways to other properties. I have some pictures showing this parking area here. This area of Market Street is a little bit wider than the adjacent areas, and as a result, attracts on-street parking as well. This curb here, as you can see, this is the frontage for the parcels in question. Now, here is where if you park too close, you block access to the bed-and-breakfast inn's driveway. However, this section is, the curb is painted red, so if you do park here, not only are blocking a driveway, you're also in a no-parking area. So either way, it is not allowed. Here are the driveways to the duplexes across the street. They, duplex, units share driveways, and as a result, there is not enough room to park two vehicles per dwelling unit off-street, and contributed to the parking issues in this area. There's an aerial showing that same thing. There's three driveways with four units, just not enough room for onsite parking for these duplexes. And it is staff's determination that with the proposed duplexes on the currently vacant lots, with those meeting the required parking standards of code, that will not exacerbate the current parking issues of this section of Market Street. Here's a view of the currently developed driveway. It's covered in leaves because, you know, winter time. Moving on to the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the CEQA guidelines. This section exempts the construction of single-family residences and accessory dwellings, duplexes, and residential accessory structures. The R2 zone is much more restrictive than the current C2 zoning of the subject parcel, and the permitted-by-right uses only allow for the construction of single-family dwellings, duplexes, and other structures associated with residential use. Construction of structures not mentioned in 15303 are not permitted in the R2 zone without additional entitlements and an additional CEQA review. This project was heard before the Planning Commission at the January 28 meeting. The Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. And to conclude my presentation, this project, it's a zoning amendment to rezone two adjacent parcels from C2 to R2. This change in zoning has been found to be consistent with the general plan and with the zoning code. It is found to be compatible with the surrounding area and exempt from CEQA, and has received unanimous recommendation from Planning Commission. For these reasons, staff recommends that the board, to find this project exempt from CEQA, adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning on the subject parcels from C2 to R2, and to authorize a publication of a description and map of the reclassified property.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Is Mr. Allen available for any possible questions from the Board? So, and then any input that you would like to give?
It does not appear as though he is on.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I wanted to give Mr. Topnelli opportunity, as this is in his district, and for any questions to the Planning Department.
No, I don't. I went over this completely. I did not, I'm going to say I did not receive any public comments on this project at all regarding parking or anything else. It is commercial property, the way it is zoned now, so if commercial industry went in there of any type, it seems to me to be more of a parking problem developing that than it would be for residential in there. So I think it's a good fit. I haven't heard anything from the Robin's Nest or any of the adjoining residents at all, so I'm fine with it. I don't have a problem.
Ms. Callaway?
No.
No? Mr. Guerrimendi?
You know, I would have to agree with Mr. Topnelli. I find the zoning amendment consistent with the area it is composed. There is some mitigation to the parking element, as he said. I agree with him 100%. Those are pretty much on the line of my comments. If there's no other further questions by the Board members, I would give the public an opportunity for public comment, and then I will be moving on to closing the public
I have not seen any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We're closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the Board. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move this aside of Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Topnelli. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrimendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes on a five-vote vote of the Board. So with that, I'll be opening, sorry. I'll be opening the public hearing, and we'll be moving on to Item 18, Planning. Conduct a public hearing, find that the project is a later activity per Section 15168 of the CEQA guidelines under the EIR prepared for the general plan, and adopt the comprehensive zoning map update, Project 2020-065. Authorize publication of summary ordinance description and URL link to brief property
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Peter Mauer, Planning Director. So this is a critical step in the implementation of the general plan in order to bring it into compliance with the land use designation, bring the zoning into compliance with the land use designations of the general plan map. There are approximately 6,900 parcels that are affected by this action. We have done our best to do outreach without direct mail notice to every individual property owner, and I hope we have done a sufficient job of doing that. There are two phases of this. One is to address those parcels whose zoning is incompatible with the new general plan land use designations. For example, if a parcel was zoned rural residential, but the land use designation was working lands, the minimum parcel size would be incompatible with that. And so we have changed the zoning to comport with the land use designation based on minimum parcel size. And that is the bulk of those changes. About 1,500 parcels altogether fall into that category. The rest and the greater number of parcels are the zones that are considered interim zones, the unclassified and the highway service zone. Both of those zones, in their purpose statement, say that they are intended to be temporary until such time as a permanent zone, consistent with the general plan is applied. So we went through and looked at every one of those parcels and tried to find a zone that is consistent with the general plan land use designation and compatible with the surrounding zoning of the property based on topography, parcel size, uses, and I think we've done a good job of identifying appropriate zones for those. For the most part, the unclassified zone is fairly restrictive, that really only allows agricultural use in a single-family home, while the zones that is changing to typically rural residential, residential agriculture, A1 zone, the general agriculture, and the general forest zone, is, has a little bit broader use for the property owner with some of the agritourism uses and other accessory uses that might be allowed, excuse me, consistent with the general plan. So we've, you know, we've come up with that scheme of zoning, and what we've done is worked with the GIS team to provide an open portal so that people can go onto the website, look up their parcel, determine what the zoning currently is and what is being proposed to change to. It's unfortunately been sort of a convoluted process. The portal worked great for application for GIS purposes, but it's not necessarily as user-friendly as I think we all would have liked to have seen. But the staff's been great in helping walk people through if they've had questions or concerns about how to access it. And so I think that for the most part, people have questioned whether the zoning change is to their benefit, have been able to work with staff and with me to, you know, identify what the zone change is, and I think for the most part, people have been satisfied. There are a couple of issues that came up that we've discovered through the process. There are several parcels that have split land use designation, and unfortunately, the changes to the GIS system didn't pick that up, and so there were some errors. And so I'd like to share my screen with you and run through a couple of changes, corrections that I would like to be, to make as a part of this. And this addresses most of the concerns that we received from the public. So there is a portion of the area that used to be a part of, well, was a part of Forest Meadows that was an approved subdivision, Forest Meadows Unit 3, I believe. It has since expired. There are a number of existing parcels and with the land use designations that were made to accommodate the sort of rearrangement of those parcels through a lot-line adjustment. And the proposed zoning shows it all going to A1, but the parcels that have been identified with the arrows there actually need to be zoned RR. So that's one of the corrections. There is also another parcel that's right up here that also needs to be RR. Moving on down to the Copperopolis area, there were two parcels that had split commercial and rural residential zoning. The land use map picked that up with the general plan adoption, but it was missed. And so the C2 portions of that parcel are proposed to remain as C2 instead of being all changed to rural residential, as shown on the GIS portal. So actually, the zoning of that would not change rather than being changed. A similar issue on property just south of San Andreas, along Highway 49, across from the old airport, there is a strip of the property that's designated as commercial, and that was not picked up. And so that C2 zoning would also remain. So with that, I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance, and I'm going to stop sharing this unless there's any questions on these changes, and show an edited version of the resolution that picks up these changes. So I'll stop that share, and I'll come back to that at the end. We have had a couple of requests by individual property owners that have their property either retain the C1 or C2 zoning that they have, or rezone their property to the C2. Unfortunately, that cannot occur with this application today because, one, it wasn't advertised for that, and, secondly, that would be inconsistent with the general plan because those lands are designated residential. However, at the Planning Commission, this issue was raised, and I think it's a good idea that, as I've stated many times, we need to constantly review our plan and see if it's working. And the Planning Commission felt that it would be appropriate to look at, you know, the commercial designations and just sort of review that to make sure that we do have enough land available for commercial development in all of our communities. And so I proposed that the staff go back and sort of look at those areas, areas of concern, particularly in Berson and along the Highway 4 corridor in the Douglas Flat and Murphy's area, to ensure that there is sufficient commercial land available to accommodate the economic needs of the community. So we'll come back and sort of revisit that if that's something that the Board thinks is appropriate. The Planning Commission felt that it was. So as I stated in the agenda, this is considered a later activity under the EIR for the general plan. Each of the zones here proposed are consistent with the general plan. It's anticipated, in fact, required, that we bring the zoning into conformance with the general plan land use map. So with that, I would recommend that we, or that you adopt the ordinance, and let me share with you some minor edits to incorporate those corrections. Here is the amended resolution, and at the bottom, I have just added this phrase, "As amended by the Board of Supervisors for the following APNs," as depicted in Attachment 1, and Attachment 1 will be the map that I presented earlier. Do you have any questions with me?
Any questions from the Board members at this time? Mr. Topnelli?
Hi, Peter. I do have a couple of questions. I'm a little bit concerned about how, when we adopted the general plan and the map, we went through and we changed zoning on parcels, and one of the people, one that stayed commercial was changed RR, and we did that to RR when we adopted the general plan. My concern is now, why didn't we change these parcels we're talking about now back then? If we were able to change a commercial property to RR, why couldn't we change all these other ones that we're talking about here when we went through and did the general plan map then? Why are we coming back now doing this and then not giving an opportunity for somebody to say, because we are sitting here today changing zones on these properties, and not giving him an opportunity to say, hey, you changed mine to RR when I had a commercial property and was in the process of developing that commercial when you changed it to RR? Why can't, since we're changing these today, change mine back to C1? To which it was originally zoned for, and these weren't, none of these other ones were changed at that time then. It just, it just doesn't seem right when you look at, when I'm looking at them, I'm trying to hear what he's saying to me about it. We had an opportunity to change these, all of these back then, but now we're bringing it forward now to change just these.
So I think part is we're confusing general plan land use designation with zoning. When we adopted the general plan, we adopted the new land use map with land use designations, not the zoning. At the time, you know, back in 2016 or '17, the Board gave us direction to notify every property owner in the county that the land use map was being changed, and gave people the opportunity to comment and contact us, and we made a lot of changes based on those comments. Now we're following up with zoning, which is different than land use, to bring that into conformance. I have spoken with the individual, I think you're referring to Mr. Ponte, with the commercial property in Berson, and I think we have a way to, you know, to relook at his property and make a determination whether or not it should have stayed commercial or if we should go back and change it, or, I'm sorry, if we should leave it residential or go back and change it back to commercial as it had previously been. But that would be because of our public noticing requirements and the fact that that would be a general plan amendment and not a zone change, we cannot do that at this time under this action.
Thank you, Peter, for that explanation.
I would have to concur with Peter. I went through the work on the land use designation maps in 2016 when it came before the Planning Commission. There was a long line of people out the door back then, in the chambers, you know, both passionate and forward about how their land use designation was being put forward. Is there any other further questions by Board members at this time? Ms. Callaway? Ms. Tholdorff?
Hi. I know we talked at length last week about these changes. One concern I do have is the realization of that confusion to some individuals in the timeline. I know we want to get this done before you leave, but some of the timelines of those realizations. For example, the city limits, there is land designation around the city that I have been told about that has not been appropriately rezoned. And I know normally Amy is very in tune to what is going on, but I think it was recent purchases by the city that has been made, and they have not been able to make the recommendations of what their changes would be that are actually in the county sphere to change over to the city limit. So such, one example is 064004001 APN, and I can email that to you later. But what do we do in instances like this with this zoning that was done that the title may not have hit of some of those properties on the outskirts of the city limits?
So if it's within the sphere of influence, then we need to coordinate with the city on any sort of future development that would occur, because the idea with a parcel that's within the sphere is that if it gets developed, it actually gets incorporated into the city limits. I do work closely with Amy Augustine, the city planner, and we haven't had any conversation about any inconsistencies that I'm aware of. I know that there was one parcel just outside the sphere that is not being proposed to be changed. There is, you know, some confusion from the property owners to how her zoning was changed some years ago, but that's not affected by this action today. And I think that anything that, if it's not being rezoned today, that doesn't affect the current zoning, the ability for the city to pre-zone the property for future annexation. And so I'm not sure that there really is an issue associated with, you know, property around the city limits, but I will certainly continue to work with Amy to resolve any concerns that there might be with that. You know, as with any large project, we will probably discover that there were errors that were made, and we can always go back and fix those. In fact, there is, there are several parcels that we missed for a variety of reasons, and I'll be taking that back to the Planning Commission at the end of this month before I leave to get those corrected as, you know, as part of the overall cleanup. But I think that we've done a really good job in identifying all the parcels that need to be rezoned, but that doesn't mean we haven't missed some that we won't be able to fix those in the future.
Okay, thank you. And it is part of this zone amendment or change today, that parcel. It is in conjunction with the Angels Creek Trail through the Copper Project, and it was, that APN was a recent purchase by the city to align the Angels Creek Trail out to New Maloney's that had not.
Can you give me that APN again?
Yes.
Okay. I will look into that, and if we need to make a correction, we can include that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Topnelli?
Yeah, Peter, I do have one more question. Are any of these properties that are in front of us today, are any of them?
Are any of these properties that are in front of us today, are any of them in subdivisions?
Not that I'm aware of. I think most of them, because most of them are the unclassified, they're more out in rural areas, those are not. The older approved subdivisions, we try to maintain the land use designation consistent with the current zoning for those subdivisions. We did do a cleanup last fall where we missed some areas. So I don't think there are any that are within a larger subdivision.
Yeah, I was just looking at the R210s, the changing to R10. The other ones, the unclassified, I don't think would be within a subdivision, although they possibly could be. That was just my concern, are we changing zoning within a subdivision and not including the whole subdivision?
Yeah. Again, I don't believe so. If we are doing any changes, it would be basically to recognize the minimum parcel size without changing the actual uses permitted, going from, say, RR5 to RR10. And so if anything, it would be consistent with what's out there today rather than allowing new changes. We're not going from RR to RA, for example.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
I would like to give an opportunity for public comment. We'll wait. If there's no one with their hands up at this time, we'll give it about 15 seconds for the delay.
There is none at this time, but Mr. Ponte is available for questions if the board members have any for him.
Well, I think he sent comments to...
Just wanted to make sure who's available if you have questions for him.
Okay. Are you going to read his letter?
Well, maybe then you can give him the opportunity to have his public comment so then he can put forward what he has to say.
Mr. Ponte, are you there?
Yes, I am. Is the sound agreeable or am I too loud?
It's agreeable.
You can hear me fine.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I was under the impression that my comments would be read, but not a problem. Addressing Mr. Mauer's comments, he did say that there was good notice and everything to different people. I can tell you that I did not receive anything in the mail, nothing that I could remember, nothing that I could ever really put my hands to that I could have read. And if I did, I would not have ignored it. But one of the problems that I did find also with this property when we first bought it, for the first two and a half years, I didn't receive a tax bill. And what I did was go into the county and questioned that there and paid the tax bills. And they handed me bills for the prior two and a half years. And they were addressed to that property, which is vacant. So I don't know if the same thing happened or not. And I don't want to plead ignorance or whatever. I'm aware of real estate parameters and so forth, but this is something that I just never thought I would have to address because when you purchase land that is commercial, you assume that it would, there's very little that would change it. So as I said, it came to my, at least in the letters, it came to my attention, it was because of someone approached me, a developer approached me to purchase the land, and it was to develop a store. So in the process of that, it became known that the land use wasn't consistent with commercial zoning. And it is a split zone, which Mr. Mauer also referenced, so I don't know what the effect that will have on it. But judging by his comments, there is opportunity to continue to change this. I mean, I would love to have it done today if at all possible, of course, but if there is a process that was expected, I'll be happy to pursue that. But I would also think, and I know that Catherine Galino was there as well, and she may have a comment herself for economic development reasons, that maybe something like a store was appropriate, and it may have provided jobs and tax revenues and things of that nature. From my understandings of rural residential, the only thing that could be on that is a home and maybe an associated little fruit stand or a horse arena or something of that nature. It isn't productive. And I think those two lots, which are contiguous down there, are in the center of Burson at the four-way cross streets. It's definitely a commercial, should be commercially zoned and used as something that would benefit the community. And I just don't see a couple of, you know, home, one property is too small to have a home and any sort of ranch, and the other one's questionable as well. So I don't see that at all as being zoned properly, but I just figured it was a collective, an oversight or a collective blanket type assessment. So other than that, it also reduces the property probably two-thirds of the value, which disappoints my wife and I, of course. But anyway, if there's something else I could do to make this happen, I'd sure like to try. So please help me with that.
Thank you, Mr. Ponte. Mr. Toffenelli or Mr. Toffenelli's got his light on. I'd like to also give Mr. Mauer an opportunity to reply to that after Mr. Toffenelli has his point.
Well, I was just going to say, Mr. Mauer and Mr. Ponte, can we get together and have a meeting, say, Peter in your office before you leave this week, and discuss how we can move forward with this?
Sure, we can set something up.
Mr. Ponte, are you open to that?
Certainly, yes, I would. Please.
Okay.
I'd love to do that.
It's always good when we can coordinate. Is there any other further public comment at this time?
I do not see any other public comment at this time.
Okay, I think we've given them ample time and opportunity. At this time, I would like to close the public hearing unless Mr. Mauer has any further things he would like to bring up.
No, I do not.
Okay, I would like to close the public meeting and bring this back to the board. We have some conversations about further work and some amendments. So right now, I would like to hear from the board on how we would like to proceed or a possible motion in the fashion of those amendments and so on.
Yes.
On this resolution, do you want us to include something on amendments? Because you said there might be some cleanup work that you would like to be included, and that could be dribbling in.
No, that would have to be a separate action because we'll need to renotice it. But the corrections that I presented previously would be included in the revised ordinance that I also presented to you.
So as amended, the ones that were in Forest Meadows, Copper, and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon?
Forest Meadows.
Forest Meadows, Copper, and San Andreas.
Correct. That's correct by the airport.
Well, I just wanted clarification, see if other board members have questions.
It doesn't seem we have more questions at this time, so I will entertain a motion.
All right, I move that we adopt the comprehensive zoning map update as amended for Copperopolis, Forest Meadows, and San Andreas.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. A second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Good work, Mr. Mauer. We have a little fine tuning to do in the future, it seems. And that's one thing, I appreciate all the good work that you and your staff put in to these ends.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
With this, we'll move on to supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Mr. Derramini? Nothing at this time. Ms. Callaway?
Yes, I had an Area 12 agency on aging meeting, and our home-delivered meals in Calaveras increased by 2,250 meals over the past year. And of course, due to COVID. We've had no concrete site meals, but so we, common grounds delivered, went from 39,000 home-delivered meals to just over 41,000.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Mr. Toffenelli? Nothing at this time. Ms. Tholndorff? Not a meeting I attended. A few, week and a half to two weeks ago, Eric Kleinfeldter of Fish and Wildlife had reached out to me. As some of you may have read, in the news, there was a gray wolf in the news that traveled into Tuolumne County. This gray wolf had actually, in the beginning of January, started out near Ben, Oregon. It traveled south very quickly at the point where it was in Alpine County. A few weeks ago, I was notified. They have a tag on this very young gray wolf. It then traveled through Calaveras County to Tuolumne County and then seemed to be heading east towards 395 Nevada area through the mountains. But very impressive, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first gray wolf within the Calaveras area. I would say in close to 90 to 100 years, that's actually registered. It's between the 1920s and the 1930s, I believe, was the last time Fish and Wildlife can pull something up officially. So, you know, wolves, they're impressive creatures, creatures to be wary of. At the same time, glad to hear that they're starting to migrate south again and they're staying in the mountains. Let's wish this one the best as it proceeds on. If there's no other further comments by the board, I would like to call the meeting, and we'll move into finishing a closed session.